This is being done in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 71, Section 38-N. At this point in time, after I end my opening remarks, we will open up the floor for a question and answer session. The question and answer session is scheduled to go until 7:30 when we will end the budget conversation and open our regularly scheduled school committee meeting. If we have additional conversation that does not occur during the 7 to 7:30 budget meeting, then we have an agenda item on the open meeting agenda for this evening where we can revisit the conversations. So, at this time, I would just like to give everybody a quick background on our budgeting process at this point in time. Our committee works in a series of smaller subcommittees, and our subcommittee for budget began their work in September or in October of last year. In January, the school committee submitted our requested budget number to our town administrator, and then in early February, all departments in town, as mandated under the charter, met where we were informed of our budget number for the coming fiscal year. At that point in time, the real work began, and our budget subcommittee got to work and did the work of what we are legally required by law, which is balancing our budget. For anyone in the room who's not intimately familiar with the process, we have a very large budget deficit that we had to work to close this year. And at this point in time, I will open up the floor to anyone who would like to ask some questions of our board.
Hello. I was a part of one of the subcommittees that worked to go through the budget, as far as the team of teachers who went through that. And I know that $600,000 is larger than what we were looking at when we initially went through that exercise. But a lot of the things that we were looking at reducing as teachers were some of the programming, like the extracurriculars that were going on, and we looked at cutting things such as middle school sports when we have such a robust town offering for things like that. But I noticed that they didn't make it onto this sheet. And I know it's not the same as staffing. It doesn't drive the cost as much as those things. But I wonder if there was a reason why some of those types of projects maybe were kept in the budget rather than on this list versus cutting things like our assistant principal and some of the other staff members? Because if I'm thinking about the budget and our hopes for future money from the state, I think it's a lot easier to decide June 30th. You know what? We can actually fund some of these middle school sports, or we can actually fund the middle school theater program than to say, "Oh, we can actually staff a full-time principal, but that principal has already resigned and gone somewhere else, and now we're back on the hunt for someone who can fulfill that role."
Yeah, so when we had the meeting and had to just look through all the suggestions that had been made from the various groups that had met and submitted suggestions, we had a list of all the stipends for sports, for example, for middle school. I know, I think, one of the things was there was the talent show, there was middle school play. Part of it had to do with even with all those cuts with smaller amounts of stipends, it didn't add up to the amount that we were having to cut. Part also with regards to the thinking about the assistant principal position had to do with the comparisons that we'd done to other schools and looking at what their staffing looked like. So it was a number of factors. It was definitely something that we discussed, but mathematically it just didn't add up. I appreciate the comment, though, about with thinking about if we are to get some funds back, that those are easier things to put back in. I hear that completely.
Yeah, I can add that, you know, one of the things is that usually those type of programs are smaller numbers, and we have talked a lot all year about the value of extracurriculars and the value of athletics, that these programs, sometimes, you know, districts see them as just enrichment, but we really see them as part of the educational day. And so that was some of the conversation that had, was had, was that while we could have gotten rid of a lot of different sports, or like you said, Mary, I know theater came, middle school theater and other things came up, we really felt that those are really part of education. So it was a hard discussion that was had.
Hello.
Hi, Anne.
Last year, did you have the dollar amounts next to the items that were going to be cut?
We did.
And this year you did not? In the future, would it be helpful to have the dollar amounts next to them?
So I think the answer was that because it was so large, the budget subcommittee felt that the school committee be given this range of stuff, and then when we get to the point where we have an actual number, then we would start looking at the actual numbers. So in the past, when you had the actual numbers, it was more during the prioritization part.
Okay.
Whereas this year, I think Justin or Mary spelled out that we did it a little differently, even though the groups who did work on giving advice did have actual numbers.
Okay.
We actually did more of that pre-work of getting, soliciting advice from the different constituencies, different unions. And so that's why right now, we're kind of talking a little bit early before we have the final number. Once we have a final number, then we'll have numbers and say exactly.
Okay, so there's another sheet coming.
There'll be another sheet coming. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And most likely a whole lot of conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure. Thank you.
Sure thing.
So, maybe I can add to the conversation, if that's okay?
Go right ahead.
And that is that I think a lot of steam was taken out of this meeting, this hearing meeting, because we had a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday where a lot of conversation was had. We had a lot of very valuable input from parents about the concerns about all the reductions that are being recommended. And there was good dialogue between the school committee and the Board of Selectmen about the revenues available and how can we make it work so that the schools don't, aren't impacted at this grade of a point. And so I think a lot of parents got a lot of answers at that meeting, and we had a lot of staff get up and talk as well. You know, right now, we passed out documents that included literally the line item numbers so that you could see how the budget is broken out. Some, I don't know if we had the extra copies of those lists of things, of the impacts back there, or if you brought those from the other meeting, but we have shared those documents too. And we've shared our concerns about the fact that since 2000, before 2013, the Maynard Public Schools were funded above the state average, per pupil average. Since 2013, there was a document that we shared that showed that the school department hasn't received level service funding. And so as a result, what we're having now is accumulation of several years of not having level funding. So last year, we had very difficult budget hearings where we had to cut positions like guidance counselors and other positions. And so it's a cumulative effect over several years now that we haven't been funded at the state per pupil level, which is one of the data points that the Department of the Ed uses for districts to measure themselves. And so that is a factor in why we're at where we're at now. And I know, you know, some people made comments that it's painful, and it's going to be even more painful if we continue on this funding track. So I know that's one of my concerns because Maynard is a great town, it's a, Maynard is a great, has great schools, and we have great students doing incredible work. But a lot of the things that don't seem, that maybe to some seem like that, you know, custodians or secretaries or even administrators, you know, we're the foundation of a $16 million business. And yes, you know, when we talk about the arts, like we've already talked about, some of those cuts, those are very visible, and those programs, the students would feel immediately. But if we had dirty classrooms because we don't have as many custodians, then the students will be impacted, it's just impacted in a different way. If they, you know, so I think that that's the concern this year, is that it may not seem that it's going to be painful, but people will notice the difference. I know we had one teacher get up and say how important the assistant principal was. When I was a kid and a teacher, I didn't, you know, the assistant principal wasn't the first person I was thinking of, but it was nice to see the teachers recognize that we have a lot of students who have social, emotional needs. And that cutting the guidance counselor last year and now cutting an assistant principal, that's going to be less opportunity for kids who have real needs to get the support they need. It may not impact everybody's class size, it may not impact the program, but those are very foundational and important pieces. So, you know, that's where I think a lot of people need to understand that secretaries, custodians, administrators, that we're the foundation of a $16 million business. And, you know, teachers are really important, our teachers are amazing, and our students know that, they commented on time. And so I'm not saying that teachers aren't, but I think that the pain that's going to happen with these cuts is that the foundation is going to erode.
So I'm gonna kind of piggyback on that. Last year, the Fowler School, we didn't receive the cuts to classroom teachers that I know the high school received. And we were lucky in one respect of that, but we did lose a full-time guidance counselor, and we have the eighth grade coming back. So we're looking at a ratio kind of of 500 students, 500 adolescents to one. And in some cases, that guidance counselor is absent. And when your one guidance counselor is absent, you still have students who are in crisis. And then if we have a half-time vice principal, we then have half the time where students who are in crisis don't have someone that they can go to. And so then we have to consider, how are we helping these students? And the reality is that when a student is in trouble, or a child is in trouble, and they have concerns about self-harm and gender identity, and they're confused and they don't want to come to school, it's not their parents that they go to, it's the guidance counselor that they talk to. And it's their friends that they talk to, and their friends who tell the vice principal. And that's how we get the support. It's those people in our school who are contacting the parents and saying, "Your child needs help." And it's not the parents usually who are calling us and saying, "My child needs help," and reaching out to us. It's our job to inform them. And without the guidance counselor from last year where we've already been reduced, I feel like that communication has already been felt, that we've already lost some things there, where something might happen over the weekend between students, and we don't hear about it when we used to hear about it. When the guidance counselors used to be telling us Monday morning, "Student came in, told me about this." And we don't have that as much anymore. And so we have some kids who are having some peer aggression issues that we don't even know about until we see it kind of explode in the hallway between kids. And so I know that you've mentioned that the money for some of these extracurriculars didn't really seem to add up and make a difference, and that the school sports are part of an education. But I'm thinking about the mental well-being of as many kids as possible and making sure that every one of those kids has an adult that they can talk to and can help them out. And a lot of the kids who are in middle school sports, they're in sports already in town, so they already have, they're already scholar athletes. We've, we're kind of doubling up on that for a lot of those kids. And so if there was something that I felt like could, could give a little bit, I feel like it's something like that. And we have a theater course that we've been having in school. So I feel like for maybe a year, we could cut some of those theater acts out of our budget if it meant that those kids could have an outlet and the kids who need help are being helped. So I'd ask you to reconsider some of those extra pieces over some of the essential staff that really supports some of the pillars that were talked about previously for the vision of the school, which was, you know, the well-being of the students and social, emotional learning. We need our vice principal in order to do that, and we need our guidance staff to be able to do that. And the students need to have those adults that they could go to.
Meg, could I ask you a question? Of the, of the two positions, and I'm not, I obviously can't make any promises, but if it were choosing between the vice principal position and the guidance counselor, do you have a sense of what, and I'm not, you know, obviously you can't speak for everyone, and obviously they're both really important, and I hear, I hear everything you're saying.
I think that we have a building-based support team that meets and talks about kids. And this year, that system has felt a little bit fractured because of the guidance, the loss of a guidance counselor. And so it's hard to say if that system will be fixed with adding in that guidance counselor, or if the system will remain the same with .5, or if it will be even more broken. So I couldn't necessarily say that and make that determination. I think our vice principal does a lot for leading the culture of the school, and so that's a very widespread thing. I think that having a guidance counselor, where we had two guidance counselors previously, they alternate between the grades, and so that they knew, or somebody in the school guidance counselor knew every kid and followed that kid from fourth grade until they left the school. And so there was somebody who knew their history, knew their learning style. So I would say they both have very sort of different benefits that benefit the students. And I would say however you can make things work, we would appreciate that.
Meg, I really appreciate your honesty and your candor. And for those of you who are in the room tonight, who aren't necessarily quite as familiar with the new budget process that we've been going through the last two budget cycles, we are really doing everything that we can to hear the thoughts and the emotions and the opinions of our community. And last year during our process, we heard loud and clear about class sizes and extracurriculars and music and art and so forth. And I think our budget subcommittee in making their recommendations did a pretty admirable job of not touching some of those pillars. And I think that the conversations that we're having tonight, and again, I appreciate your candor because you're informing our decision-making in the future, what you're seeing here is the process of the four years that I've been on the board, never once having the opportunity to vote to add a position. So every year that I've been on this board, we have been having these difficult conversations. And unfortunately, to steal a metaphor, there is no meat left on the bone. And we are now at a point where every cut is deep and meaningful and hurts someone in some significant way. So I would like to circle back to those, to a comment that was made on Tuesday night. Please, those of you who are, you know, residents in our community, please, we need to have a long, hard, serious conversation about how we get more revenue in this town. Because revenue directly impacts the amount of money that we have to spend on things like our schools, our fire department, our police officers, our DPW, our trash pickup, and so forth. Because the reality is, is that this year, according to our town administrator, revenues aren't where they need to be. And that's again why we're being impacted in the way that we are. So I really appreciate you coming up, Meg, and sharing that. And I'm certainly making note of everything that's being shared tonight to inform the decision-making going forward. So, thank you.
And I think the discussions from Tuesday where there was a lot of talk about being more collaborative for all the departments in town and thinking about the budget and how it affects everyone, where we tend to just hear about the school when it's time for the school, but we don't necessarily see the big picture, just as we don't know how the funds for all the other departments are, how they're using it necessarily. And they might, might not know what those funds mean for us. But I think that with the close work that we do with the fire department and the police work on Alice training and making sure we have safe schools, that I think if they knew about how deep some of these cuts were going in terms of the safety of students and, you know, the protection of these students and how we can prevent them from making wrong choices or disastrous choices, that they would actually appreciate knowing like that we were trying to do the best part we could, and that they might be able to collaborate more, the town might be able to collaborate more.
Yeah, I meant to say it during my opening statement too, but our chair, Dawn Capello, who is unable to join us tonight, has actually requested to be put on the agenda for the BOs meeting this coming Tuesday night as well. She wants to talk budget, she wants to talk the possibility of available funding, but more importantly, she wants to talk about priorities and revenue. And we asked very specific questions on Tuesday night that we did not get answers to. We are being very transparent. Each person in this room knows every single cut that's being made as a result of being underfunded. I asked what the fire department was giving up. I asked what the police department was giving up. I asked what the DPW was having to give up, because our town administrator very clearly said, "All departments in our town are being underfunded." But I didn't get that answer. So if there's anyone in this room that's sharing the same questions that I, that I asked on Tuesday night, please, pick up the phone and call Town Hall. Please, send an email, because we're being transparent, we're sitting here taking the heat for very difficult and painful cuts that we're being, we're having to make. And I don't know the extent that the other departments in this town are being affected. So if you have that question, please ask it.
And I think Chairman Capello would like, I think Chairman Capello would like to continue that conversation at the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Absolutely. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Justine St. John, I'm Fowler PTO co-chair.
Hi, Justine.
Hi. So I've been kind of following some of the conversations, I've met privately with Mary, with Dawn. And I'm actually here to support the music program, which I normally kind of let the music association do that. But I have to say that, so my son plays the trombone, he's a freshman, not the most outgoing kid in the world. But I was talking to him last night about how these cuts would, I was, we were just having dinner conversation, and I said, "Yeah," I said, "you know, one of the things that looks like it could get cut is if the Fowler configuration works the way it looks like it might go, that they would lose the individual small instrument instruction."
Small instrument.
Yes.
Correct.
And my son looked right at me and he said, "There goes the music program." And he's not a big band kid that I, I mean, I know he plays, and he just went to Disney and everything else, and he's good, but he's not, so for him to know that that is so crucial, that it really made me think. And I know that, I heard you talking about the theater program, and I'm not saying that that's not a good program, but I think it's only been in existence for this year, maybe? So I, I kind of was wondering if that's an option, is to shift those hours to the small instruction or so. I know it's a scheduling thing also, but, but just something to consider. And I'm sure you guys have considered lots of things, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Absolutely. The purpose of this conversation tonight is to hear the input and weigh the opinions and the thoughts of the community. And we're in a place where it's difficult, but if we hear from enough constituents, and as you were talking, I'm, I'm keeping tallies of every person who's come to the mic over, this is now the third meeting where we've discussed the budget openly. I did the same thing last year, and that informs our decision-making process going forward. Because I really mean it, like last year, we heard loud and clear, "Please protect our class sizes." Because that came through in the people that came to the mics.
Right.
Right now, music's in the lead.
Yeah. No, can I?
I don't mean to make light of a difficult situation, but I want you to know we're hearing you.
And can I thank you, because sometimes it takes a different viewpoint, which is why the budget subcommittee actually asks for other input, because we, the scheduling isn't done. So the fact that you're talking about maybe we should consider instead of theater, small group instruction, is something that we can look at. It's not cemented in stone yet, and maybe we can help solve some of that problem. So I really appreciate hearing a different perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll work with our principals on the scheduling.
Right.
Jennifer and I, Jennifer really does the majority of the work, by the way. She, she does the majority of the curriculum work and the scheduling with the principals, but we can look at that. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Justine, too, just, I know we don't have dollar amounts here, but when we were talking about, when I was talking about theater, I was talking about the advisor to the middle school play.
Right, right, right.
Who gets about a $2,000-something dollar stipend. I was just double checking the numbers.
Oh, yeah.
No, but I think what Justine is saying is there's theater classes. Yeah, there are theater classes this year, which was the first year that we've had theater classes.
Which is very cool, but at the same time, if we're looking at dismantling the, the actual band program to have the theater program, it just doesn't quite, you know.
Yep.
So, if I could jump in just for one second, because I shook my head and I have a very bad poker face. And I just want to explain why I shook my head in that particular capacity, and you alluded to it when you said, "I know it's a scheduling situation." So we absolutely, and it's great feedback to consider different ideas, you know, throughout all these processes, we've had lots of different ideas. The theater classes that are being offered are in the elective rotation differently than the instrumental, so it's absolutely something that we could look at, but it's a, it's a piece of, you know, if the students aren't, we need to make sure that we have students with teachers.
Right.
And it's, you know, kind of a math problem in that capacity, but we can certainly look and see if there's some manipulation that could occur in that capacity, so we'll look at it.
Hi. Melissa Levine-Piuro, I think you guys all know me. So just as a little bit of a different perspective, I don't have any children in the school system, but I think many people know that I do family law, and I have a law firm in town, and there's five of us in the office that practice family law. And we represent a lot of families in Maynard and surrounding towns going through family law issues. And my past life was working in nonprofit and domestic violence, and I work with a lot of families whose children have been exposed to domestic violence and sexual abuse situations and other problems. And the number one person that those kids go do to piggyback on what Meg said is guidance counselors. And that's the way they get help and support and services. And through the years, I've been very impressed with Maynard's guidance counselors, and the vice principal too, and the support they've been able to give these kids and connect them with services, whether, you know, that's through us, reaching out to therapists and things like that. So I think having enough guidance counselors at, you know, each school so that they're not sharing and around, I've definitely noticed the effect in this past year in cases that we've had. And I think the guidance counselors make all the difference, so I just wanted to share that, because I think it's so important for the kids in this community to stop bad situations from getting even worse.
Thank you.
A great perspective, and I also see our students shaking our heads every time that comes up, every time they see the word guidance counselor. Our student representatives are saying, you know, when I, I heard Meg say, you know, "The students come to the guidance counselor," I saw you all shake your head. So I think every, you know, it's great to hear from your perspective too, because you're representing people who have needs, and their needs that sometimes aren't seen. That's that whole foundational element that we were talking about. Thank you so much.
So I just have a quick question. In the same vein of the contraction of the assistant principal position, I know that a couple of weeks ago, we talked about some of the possibilities and what it would look like, how Green Meadow and Fowler would share that position. I'm just wondering, maybe too soon in the process, but I don't, have you guys have any idea, kind of update on how that would look, or maybe it's too soon?
Well, we've had some questions like, "Oh, would it be like every other day?" Because that probably wouldn't work.
Right.
So it would have to be parts of the day, and they'd be running back and forth. I mean, you know, depending on need, because a lot of times, a, a system principals are dealing with crisis. So it wouldn't really be a strict, you know.
Right.
You know, if they might have more work to do at Green Meadow, and they might spend the majority of one day there, but then get called to Fowler for something else, where they might, on, on certain days, I'm certain that they would have a lot more work at Fowler. So it's, I don't think it's going to be a, I think it's going to be as needed, but I don't, I certainly don't think it's going to be Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday at Green Meadow, Tuesday, Thursday, you know, it's not going to be divvied up that way. They're going to be running back and forth.
I know there's some concerns about that.
Yeah, no, they'll be running back and forth.
Okay.
One of the other things that we've talked about is what are ways, you know, similarly with making adjustments and shifting for, you know, specialist teachers and things like that, what are ways that we can maybe adjust the concept of an administrative, of an assistant principal if they're not housed in one building, so that they can provide some support differently than they might be doing currently? So what are, you know, could this person be the assistant principal for mental health or, you know, some phrasing in that sort of capacity with some specific training, with some specific abilities to provide some of the supports that we're not able to provide with the guidance staff reduction? So, you know, it's, it's really dependent upon where we land with all of our staffing decisions and how, as I said at the last meeting, how we can make sure that this person who's sitting in this role is able to provide the most efficient and effective services where they are needed for the students. So we're looking at some different options in that capacity.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, looking at the time, it's approaching, so I'm going to take one more comment. If there's anybody, come on up.
Well, hi, I'm Brenda, I was at the meeting last, on Tuesday. And I kind of have three parts to my comment. First of all, I shared that my son is on a 504, he has bilateral hearing loss and wears hearing aids. Green Meadow has been phenomenal about accommodating him, so he has full access to the curriculum, that's the coin, it's a Federal Disabilities Act.
Correct.
In addition to the teacher being trained on how to use a receiver and the equipment being purchased, the physical space that Michael is in needs to be accommodated. That includes the walls need to be acoustically sound, there has to be carpet on the floor, the chairs can't be loud, they have to have softies on them. Mr. Girardi, you made a, or Dr. Girardi made a comment about not having clean rooms. It's not that, it's those are the people who are the people who made my son's room usable for his ears.
Great point.
And every single room that he goes to will have to be accommodated by federal law. So it's not just the toilet paper rolls not being filled, because we all know it's that painful to do that. I tell my husband that every time. It's way more. A safe walking place for the kids who have trouble walking. You know, having a clean school that the kids take pride in, because when they see that they're taken care of, they feel valued, they feel safe, and then they're going to learn. Okay?
Yes.
So I understand that every cut hurts at this point, and every person is important. I just wanted to highlight how important those custodians are.
Thank you.
The other point I wanted to make is, Mary, you made a comment on Tuesday that the sky's not falling yet. I want to share with you the perception of most of the people that I know in Maynard that have kids in the school system. The skies are falling. We are making cuts right now that are so painful, and they've been happening since 2012. When is that going to change? I was told on Tuesday, it looks worse next year. A lot of people are getting out. If you don't have that core of students that aren't on IEPs, that are higher achievers, and they're leaving Maynard, you're left with an extremely difficult student base. The sky is falling. Fund these schools. Mr. Girardi, Dr. Girardi, with that note, if we've been having budget cuts since 2012, and it's 2017, where have you been? Why haven't you been screaming from the top of your lungs to every person in Maynard, to the Board of Selectmen, to support these teachers, support these schools? We're underfunded. This is what it's going to look like in two years. This is what it's going to look like in five years. What's it going to look like in six years? I want to give a little anecdotal evidence. My son was with his teacher going to Title I reading, walking down the hallway. There was an incident in the classroom, in the hallway, that had four staff members trying to control one Green Meadow Elementary School child, safely to remain dignified, to keep that child dignified, and to keep him under control. My son was walking past this with four staff members. My son was assaulted by this child. He got up and he hit my son. No one could have guessed it was going to happen, but the bottom line is, you have these babies who need four staff members to keep them safe and dignified and under control, so they can learn how to deal with whatever they have to deal with, so that other kids can remain safe and continue learning. Put them in a middle school with no support of a safe adult to go to. There's all this talk right now about this Netflix show, Thirteen. I have to talk to my sixth grader about suicide. But it's real. And if there isn't that support in school, who are we going to miss? And does it take one kid? I don't know. But it's real. It takes four adults in Green Meadow to keep a kid safe. I think it takes more than a half of a person in the middle school.
So can I just, I'd like to say that I really appreciate all the information that you're, and I agree with you. And as far as have we been screaming about it, we have. The problem is that, because Justin just said, he's an educator as well. He's been screaming for four years in a row. I've been providing data to the town. The problem is that we haven't had the visibility. People don't come to the schools. And the reality is, Maynard schools have a lot to be proud of. There's a lot of very good things going on. The problem that you pointed out is, it's the mass in the middle, or even more so, the students with the greatest need that get impacted by these cuts every year. But a lot of the kids are doing very well. We have some very successful kids, and we have some very successful programs. So we have been screaming. We have been providing data. I think having the strong parent presence at that last meeting really helped. I think seeing parents here is really helping. We're suggesting that you go to the next Board of Selectmen meeting, because Chairperson Capello was very strong in her statements to the Board of Selectmen at the last meeting, even identifying specific funds she was hoping they would release. We have been screaming, and I think people are starting to pay attention to our data. So some of the data that I've shared with, you know, that people are seeing now, I've been sharing every year at the budget meetings. So the news is, we have been screaming. We haven't been heard. But I think now that you're here to help us, and other parents are here to help us, that together, people will hear our voice. So I really appreciate everything you said, because, you know, we go, a lot of us who are educators, go into this business for all students. And even though we have some outstanding programs for some students, we're serving, the students are our citizens. They deserve to be represented by their government. They deserve the benefits of their government, and their schools deserve to provide them with those services. So I really appreciate everything you pointed out, and I agree with you. So I want to say thank you.
There are babies.
Yeah.
And Brenda, just real quick, and you know, because you were at the meeting on Tuesday night, which was, it was a great turnout, and there was a lot of, you know, pro-school people that, I think that was good for the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator, especially to see some of the other voices that aren't always heard on the town side. So that's really the, what we need going forward, is we need enough of a voice to where people are saying, okay, we're at this point now in this town where, what is the town's priority? Because we have to make decisions for the school, the selectmen make decisions for the town, but what is the, what is the, what does the majority want? Does the majority want to have strong schools and add programs? Or does the majority want to add, you know, fire station, police, DPW, things like that? And what's, what's the balance? And because you were there Tuesday night, I don't have to tell you that, when we, our original request for a level funding was six and a quarter percent. And the town administrator said, "We were lucky to get four percent." So that's what we're, that's what we're working with. And I guess to our fault, we haven't done a good job over the past five years of, I know, we've been screaming. The question is, I guess we haven't been screaming loud enough or effectively enough. So now it's kind of getting to that boiling point where now people like yourself and other concerned parents are starting to get involved and realizing that, yeah, we can't, we can't keep doing this. We can't keep taking away from the school. So I applaud your efforts and your passion, and I think it's great. And I just want to encourage you and others who feel the same way to keep echoing those comments and concerns to the Board of Selectmen. Because the only thing that's going to change is how much money that we have to deal with. The problem becomes, whatever they give us for our budget, we have to make it fit with the amount they give us. So we're handcuffed by that amount. So obviously, if we can get some more from them, that's going to give us some more flexibility. And the only way that happens is, because we talk to them all the time, we ask for level funding, we don't get that. So maybe their perception is that, well, you know, overall the town, you know, they, they're probably operating on the assumption that things are going fine, because they're not hearing from the school community. And yeah, you know, the schools get less than level service, and yeah, we made cuts, but you know what? We just keep moving along, which we have to do. We have no other choice. But now that we're seeing some of these real painful cuts, and I think painful is the appropriate word, because this is going to be felt by the majority of the student population, a lot of these cuts that we're having to make this year and going forward, we need to just help get that message out to the town side to let them know that it's, it's not okay. We can't keep doing business as usual. We can't keep taking less-than-level funding and trying to make that work. So thank you, and just, you know, keep up the good work, and just try and get more and more people involved to let the selectmen and the other people on the town side know, you know, what our priorities as a town are. Because I think you're spot on.
One last thing, because I know Justin's dying to start the next meeting. We have an obligation to start the next meeting. But one of the documents I gave you that, I talked about the chart that showed our per pupil spending and how it's dropped. On the front side of that chart, it also shows our fixed costs. It shows our level service request. But for several years, up until fiscal year 16, we were asking for growth budgets. So we were asking for, we weren't just asking for level service. We wanted to improve. So just so you know, we've been advocating. But when you see a trend over those four years of getting less than just level service, at some point, you give up asking for a growth, and all you start asking for is level service. And quite frankly, I think yours, you know, the sentiment is, the sky has fallen over four years. And we need to turn that around as a community.
I hope that you never give up and ask for more.
Thank you.
We always do.
Because what your salary is paying you to do is not give up. And that was my other question, is why are we just asking for level funding? Why aren't we asking for more?
So historically, in all of my years on the board, Brenda, we always gave two or even three different numbers to the town administrator. One was always our level service budget. One was, here are some really cool things that we would like to do with just a little bit more money. And then here is our gold-plated, copper-bottomed, if somebody in town buys a Powerball ticket-type budget. And for years, the other numbers were ignored, and we always got either the level service or less than. So finally, this year, we stopped playing the optimism game, and we just gave them the number that we said we absolutely couldn't live without. And you see where we're sitting here tonight. So we did, we tried to play a slightly different game this year, and the results were exactly the same.
Justin, if I can add to that, just because I happened to sit on the FinCom for several years prior to coming into this role. And I remember being in those conversations where there was a great deal of confusion and consternation about why the schools were giving multiple numbers in terms of, just tell us how much you need to run the schools, was sort of the ask. And so the school committee, you know, talked about very, in a very detailed way, what do we give and what do we provide? And as Justin said, it was, this is what we need, so that there's no confusion. There's no, oh, well, we thought we gave the schools what they need, but, but we weren't sure, because they provided us with too many numbers. So it's not as though we don't have ideas. Our school site councils have over a million dollars of additional funding that they would like to have in terms of added programs and added staffing. We have those lists. We will continue to dream. We will continue to plan. We will continue to create the best schools that we can in Maynard, and try to do the best that we can in terms of getting some of that funding. I know you have to end the meeting, but I do want to mention one other meeting. I'll do it after you end the meeting. I'll do it at the start of the next one.
So I am required at this point to motion to close the Maynard Public Schools budget conversation for the evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Motion passes three, zero. And at this point, I would like to remind everybody still in attendance that if you have continuing questions, or if anything that comes up in the next few minutes sparks an idea, if you have a copy of the agenda in front of you, we will be revisiting the budget again later in the open meeting agenda as well. So at this point in time, I would like to open this evening's Maynard Public Schools public meeting. The time is 7:42, 7:43. The first item of business on this evening's agenda is the minutes from our April 13th school committee meeting.
Motion to approve the April 13th school committee meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes three, zero. At this point, I would like to pass the microphone literally over to Dr. Girardi. Oh, no, I'm skipping one. Chairperson's report. I'm the chairperson tonight. Okay. Very brief. I've covered a lot of ground already tonight. I would like to acknowledge our musicians who just returned from Disney. We were in attendance on Tuesday evening for our joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, and we were able to see the buses go by. I'm quite excited to see the support and the recognition for our students and their accomplishments while they were down in Florida. And I would like to send along my sincere congratulations. It sounds like they represented Maynard incredibly well and made all of us very proud of them. So if you are in attendance and you have a student musician, please pass along our congratulations and our best wishes. And that concludes my chairperson's report. And now I'm going to pass the microphone to Dr. Girardi.
So this has been a challenging week for me, because by contract, I have to pass out the layoff letters, and I've had a lot of very difficult conversations. And that's just the process. It's, and we appreciate all the support, and we hope that that turns around. And I just want to tell every staff member that we sincerely hope that that turns around. But I do want to end on a positive note, and you kind of stole my thunder. Sorry. In that, at the meeting, it was really nice to see the police and fire escort of the band, which we appreciate the police and fire department in so many ways. And having them escort the band back from their trip and where they shined was really appreciated. And I just want to let parents know, on a very, another positive note, that one of our teachers recommended a high-five program for the police and fire. And so tomorrow, if people see police and fire at Green Meadow in the morning, it's probably not because there's a problem. The police and fire are going to be there to give kids a high-five on the way in, and there'll be a little assembly for the students to learn about how important the police and fire are in our, in our community, and to thank them and honor them. So again, I want to thank them and honor them for honoring our band. I also want to thank them and honor them for everything they do for our community. And I just want the community to know, if you see a lot of police and fire, it's not, probably not because there's a problem, hopefully, knock on wood. It's because we're honoring the police and fire and having the high-five for police and fire. And I know the students at Green Meadow have already learned a little bit about that, and they're excited to. And we're going to make it a very positive event for them. So I just wanted to report that out to the community. Thank you.
Fantastic. At this point in time, ladies, thank you for sitting so patiently. I will pass the microphone over to the three of you for our student representatives' report.
Hi. So today, we worked really closely with Mr. Carrijanis, and we really wanted to prepare something that was meaningful, and that was really coming directly from not only Maynard High School peers, but other students as well. And I know there's obviously been a lot of talk about things, but we really wanted to give you guys, really from students' eyes, how people are feeling about what's happening. So to start off, we did want to talk about custodians. Our junior class has done, two years in a row, we do a janitor appreciation week, where we work hands-on with the janitors. We see what they do. We see what their shifts are like. We go in early with them. And we really learned, our class especially, to really understand how much they do. And we've really learned to appreciate them, and we've made it, we've made a serious effort to encourage our entire student body, especially at Maynard High School, to respect everything. And seeing that and witnessing what, how much they do, thinking about how that could be done by two to three people is concerning, and especially when we've built such a beautiful new school. And if people think that it's going to be able to be maintained and upheld as well as it is, I think that that's false. And I understand that dirty classroom things may not affect us directly, but it does in a way. And I think it's just unfair, honestly, to think of that as not having an impact. And also, I just, it's coming from sympathy for myself, because we work with them twice a year, and we see what they do. And so, it's fun to mention that. But I think the janitors are very underappreciated as it is, and we're working to change that. But there's definitely other departments that we wanted to talk about.
All right. So, so I'm Sophia. And I'm kind of talking about the whole, the guidance aspect. I know there was a lot of stuff brought up. And I'm not only talking about the high school either, I'm kind of talking about Fowler as well. And like she said, we did talk to Mr. Carrijanis, so we kind of tried to clarify a lot of the fuzziness that was going on between us and the rest of the students. I know that Fowler, for me, that age group is such a, such a crucial time for social and emotional development. And having gone through it ourselves, we had three guidance counselors when we were in middle school. And having that availability of three different people, and knowing that whenever I went down there, someone was going to be there to support me, was like, the biggest, biggest effort, like, the best thing that could have possibly helped me throughout middle school. And we were talking to Mr. Carrijanis about it. And like, realistically thinking, I don't know how the job is done with the reliance on just one single person. I know that it's split up, it's like .5 and .6 FTE, I believe. I don't know exactly, but, and students are only there to see one guidance counselor. So when one or more students go down, they're not able to meet with the guidance counselor. And I just think that that relationship that you have with them is so, so, so important. And it moves up throughout the high school. And I know that if things do change in Fowler, that will affect the students at the high school if seniority kind of comes into play, because then that could change who we have our relationships with. And as a junior, going to be a senior next year, I have a relationship, a very strong one, with my guidance counselor that I've been with since I was in the high school in eighth grade. And if I didn't have that, I don't know, not only on a scheduling and college kind of readiness basis, but like, an emotional kind of basis, like, if I didn't have that, I don't know, I don't know how I would have got through high school. And I'm not even trying to be like, a teenager, like, it's the truth. And like, I understand how difficult, like, the decisions must be for you guys. But I just want to shed some light on how important it is for, like, you to form bond with somebody and to just always have it changing, like it's going, kind of looking like for the future, always having that person- Always having that person changing that you are supposed to rely on and supposed to go to. How is a student supposed to feel comfortable going to somebody who is, like right at the end of the year, you're building such a strong relationship and then you come back in September and it's a totally new person? So I just think that that's something that was a little concerning to hear about today, which kind of sheds light on the scheduling and things like that.
Yeah. And there's already lines out the door at the high school for scheduling. And for example, I sat down with my guidance counselor the other day and I was trying to fill my schedule. And I'm not kidding you, me and my guidance counselor sat there and were hunting for classes to put in my schedule. Being a senior next year, obviously, you don't take as many core classes. You don't have to take history. You don't have to take this. But we were searching for classes to put in my schedules. I have three blocks currently that I've, because I've filled my like core classes, three blocks that are going in as directed study or work study. And I, I don't want, I mean, I, it's cool, like the free time, it's cool, but I want to take classes that are going to prepare me. And they're just not, they're not there. And I get it. And we were saying about how music education is really, really important. And, but it's cut completely at the high school. As a freshman, I took an intro to theater class and it literally changed my high school career. I, it changed my passion about music. I got involved in musicals and chorus and it really helped me succeed in high school. And last year, there was a Theater Two class that was going to be offered. And I know for 100% fact that 22 students signed up for that class and were interested in it and were passionate about it. And it was not able to run because Ms. Blanchard's position was cut to a .4. And that was devastating to a lot of kids. So not only was Theater One not offered, Theater Two wasn't offered, music performance was cut and music theory was cut. So any student interested in performing arts now has no music class. So it's just, when you talk about like how it's really important and how it's a part of education, okay, if it, if they get it in middle school, like, but then in high school, there's nothing. So it's frustrating. Sorry. And then we, and Ms. Blanchard herself spreads herself extremely thin, obviously, as it is. And another position that is like that is the secretary. Obviously, you guys know, we walk by their office every single day. There's never a minute that they're not doing anything. Those two ladies work so hard. I see it every day. There's even many times when Mr. Caruso and Mr. Carrijanis are sitting there, filling in. If they're just trying to go get lunch, they're sitting there when there's a line of kids out the door trying to get passes and Mr. Carrijanis has to take time away, Mr. Caruso has to take time away. The eighth grade science teacher I've seen has to take time away to go sit and do, help them. So how is one person supposed to do a job that two people do? It's just confusing. And if that continues, Mr. Carrijanis was saying, he's going to end up sitting in that chair instead of doing long-term proactive planning. He's going to be reacting to things that are happening in the morning. And that's extremely frustrating for himself and for students. So, yeah.
So this year, being a senior that's graduating, as class president, I've had to help put together graduation. Now, usually graduation is handled by one of the secretaries and she had it all down from flowers to like senior awards night and the program and everything was always handled by her. Now, this year, since she's gone, we literally have no idea what's going on. And I feel like graduation is one of those events where you really need to have a plan and you need to have it down. And I'm not saying that just because she left, you know, graduation is a mess this year. But I think in the future, if you're looking at cutting secretaries, it's just not going to work out. Because if this is a mess, like what else is going to become a mess? And we, as a senior class student government, are now having to handle or help handle it. And we are putting together the graduation program, you know. We're helping pick out decorations, just stuff we're usually not supposed to be doing.
Just kind of, because those were kind of like the four main points that we wanted to reflect on. When we were talking to Mr. Carrijanis, we kind of said, we were just, we kept talking and the conversation just kind of kept growing. And he didn't really realize how much passion and how interested students were in this topic. Like I know, students, obviously, school, school for them is more important than I think a lot of people think. And these kinds of cuts and these kind of changes affects them so, so immensely. And I know, when I got into the high school, eighth grade year, that it's right when all these kinds of budget cuts had to be, had to be starting. And now we have these small little increments that happen every year with the budget. And then now this year, I feel like all of those small little cuts have turned into this big hole. And now like we have, all these people are spreading themselves so thin and trying to just cover it up. It's literally like a Band-Aid and it keeps reopening. And then we're putting another Band-Aid on it and then it's reopening. And you know, it just feels like it's going to continue. Like, I don't know, like one of the other people was saying, like, it's just kind of like a continued thing. And like, I'm graduating next year, but I just, I'm thinking about two years, three years, four years, five years from now, what's it going to look like? What, what's the hole going to be? It just, it concerns me so, so much for not only myself for next year, but for the students that are in the middle school that are in Green Meadow. Like what is it going to be when they get to high school? So.
And we were also talking about how, sorry, this will be the last thing. We were also talking about how Maynard is so unique and it's so special because they're such close-knit bonds. You know everybody. You know your teachers. You form extremely special bonds. But I know as, like, I'm, we've talked to some of the eighth graders, we've talked to freshmen, and I have never like heard of so much interest in ASABET. Because people are so, and it's just as students, I know you guys hear it and I like, I enjoy hearing it from like parents and teachers all the time, but a lot of students are so afraid to say their, like, to voice their opinions. And it like, it just hurts because so many students, they're like, "I love Maynard, but I'm feeling like, you know, I can't get what I need." And it's just, it's so sad because I've enjoyed my time at Maynard High School so much. I think it's amazing and I would not have wanted to go to high school at a bigger school. I love it. But it just, it's extremely sad that there's so many students reconsidering what they're doing because unfortunately, there's just things happening that are unfortunate. But yeah, that's pretty much all I had to say. There you go. Yeah.
So as Sophia said, she's, you know, worried about the future students. And you know, me graduating this year, you could think, "Oh, well, you know, why do I care? I'm leaving." Well, I have formed such close bonds with students all the way through, there are people who are in their freshman year right now through sports or music or whatever it is. And sometimes I look at them and I think, "Oh, my gosh, what's going to happen to you?" Because I remember what we went through last year and the things we had to deal with this year because of what happened last year and what you guys got last year. So what's, what's it going to be like in the future? What's it going to be like when, you know, I come home from college? What am I going to be hearing from these kids who are going to be, you know, working their way through school? Is it going to be horrible? Like what, what is, what does the future look like? I just feel like, instead of, you know, digging ourselves a deeper hole, like we need to find a way to fix it without cutting these crucial, crucial positions. And I understand that, you know, the cuts have to come from somewhere. But I feel like cutting people from the system is just not the way to do it.
I was, I so appreciate the three of you getting up here and speaking so passionately about these things. I mean, if there isn't a better symbol, right, of what, of Maynard and Maynard pride and what we have to be proud of. I think what's tough is with the school system, you know, when you said cutting people. Unfortunately, you know, we were talking about this Tuesday night, but salaries are the biggest cost driver. And we, it is painful. I mean, I'm sitting up here, just, this is a hard evening to hear all these things because we don't want to cut anything. We don't. And we have been working as hard as we can and trying to go to bat for the schools and will continue to do it. But it is, it's tough. It's tough because we can't, when we get that number, we have very little control over it. Once we get the number from the town, we'll still advocate if the town finds money. But I want to say that I appreciate, I so appreciate everything you are saying. And I encourage your friends, encourage everybody to get involved. You know, unfortunately, sometimes it comes to this point in the year when things are getting cut and all of a sudden, a lot of people turn out. And it's, you know, as you guys go on to graduate and, you know, whether you stay in Maynard or move out of Maynard, just stay involved in politics, you know, pay attention. Because things are always happening. And unfortunately, sometimes it takes something like cuts, you know, for, for people to get, to get out. So.
Unfortunately, Sophia and I have a mandatory dance rehearsal. So we have to head out. But thank you guys very much for listening.
Ladies, thank you so much for your time.
Another meeting to go to because you spoke very eloquently. Monday night is the Finance Committee Open Hearing, where you can share the same message and the same pieces with them so that they can understand the impact. And then obviously, Tuesday is the, what is it?
And in all honesty, ladies, they hear from the same people, meeting after meeting. Hearing from the students that are going to be impacted is probably one of the most powerful, most powerful things they will hear all year.
And the students that were impacted last year into this year.
Yeah. Go. Do the rest of your student athlete stuff. Thank you.
And by the way, last year, it wasn't just them. They brought a bunch of friends too. Just reminding you.
Oh, when we were in the Fowler Library, there was like 300 high schoolers staring at us.
Yeah, so keep that in mind. There's powers and numbers.
Thank you. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Okay.
Justin, can I elaborate on what I said very, very quickly? So the, for the Finance Committee Open Hearing, that's an important one for folks to go to. Essentially, what they do is they go through each of the Warren articles and talk about their discussion and how they voted on it. But there is also that document that if you were in the building on, at the last meeting.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, that we were referencing, which has their sort of summaries of each of the town departments. The, they tried to do a three- to four-year history of each of them in terms of their allocations and staffing and those sorts of things. And then also, each department submits a sort of synopsis of their budget request summary. So you can get a pretty comprehensive document, which I believe is also going to be posted online, asking some of these questions, you know, as Justin indicated, asking the questions of, you know, you know, Janelle said it has to come from somewhere. And I think for me, having been involved on the Finance Committee, the question is, it is, does it? You know, like, do we know what we want as a town and as a community? And have we been asked as a town and a community to make priorities and to determine where we want the funding to go and how we want that funding to be used? So making those points and saying, "These are conversations that we expect you to be having. We anticipate you having whether this year becomes any better or not, whether this budget cycle ends any better or not." You know, that this is the expectation moving into next year and we expect to discuss priorities. Because I want my sidewalks, you know, paved and cleaned and all of those things too. I want those as well. But, but at what expense and what are, and what are we saving? And I do want to say, and Kyle, I mentioned this to you at the last meeting, one of the first things I was told when I got into the teaching profession is that you need to make friends with the secretaries and the custodians because they are the ones who are in charge of the school. And, and I mean that in the, you know, most sincere possible way, that the work that you all do, as Dr. Girardi mentioned, is often thankless, is often underutilized. I love the fact that the lady said that they've done those pieces. So thank you for all you do and know that that's the message.
It's pretty amazing.
That's great. So thank you all for all you do.
At this point in time, we're going to reopen for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for anyone to raise a question about something that's on the agenda or bring an item to our attention that we may not necessarily be able to act on in the moment, but we might want to consider putting on the agenda for a future meeting so then we can subsequently act on it. So at this point in time, if anybody in the room has anything that they'd like to share or contribute, please approach the microphone. Oh, come on, Nancy. Just speak loud. Use your playground voice. I was remiss, yes. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Yes. So it was our music program, not just the instrumentalists, but the vocalists as well. So thank you for reminding me of that. So I will amend my earlier statement and say, congratulations to all of our musicians and musical performers. Any other questions or comments at this point in time? Okay. At this point, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Girardi for the school choice vote conversation.
So this year, we only have two openings for Grade Six, five openings for Grade Seven. As with last year, I'm recommending that we approve a limited school choice to two openings for Sixth and five openings for Grade Seven. And if you approve that, we would then advertise it and follow the school choice practice. I think last year, you also included any staff who may want to choice their students in as well. So I would ask for a vote to approve a limited school choice to two openings for Sixth Grade, five openings for Seventh Grade, and any staff who may want to choice their children into our school system tonight.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to have the school choice open for two openings in Grade Six and five openings in Grade Seven and for any district teachers who would like to choice their students in for next year.
I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussion?
I just, to say to everybody, if you don't know, if we get choice students, that's revenue that comes into the school. So this is a good thing. And over the past 10 years or so, we've seen a huge momentum swing where we used to lose a lot of students to out in district schools that were choicing out of Maynard and we were losing money. But over the past 10, 15 years, we've actually reversed that trend to the point where we're actually making more money than we lose. So more people are staying in Maynard. And that's why, really, the crux of this whole budget thing is so important. Because if we start cutting things, then people are going to start going other places because it makes it look like we're not prioritizing the schools in this town. So the fact that we worked so hard over, you know, this is decades worth of work to get to the point now where we have students choicing in. And last year, we didn't have any openings because it was full. We were at capacity. I mean, what a great problem to have. So we've worked so very hard to get to this point where there's more people coming in than there are leaving. That we don't want to see that go the other way. So that's, you know, another thing that we'd like to remind the town of, that as another source of revenue, when students choice in and we keep students in district, we're keeping money in Maynard and we're bringing money to Maynard. So this is a good thing.
Nicely said. Any other discussion? Yes? Numbers, can you elaborate on your question a little bit? Numbers on?
We do. Yeah, in our budget book, you'll notice, if you don't, it's on, it's online. So you can look at the budget, the fiscal year 18 budget, what do we call it? Budget proposal is a document that's on the website. I think it's near the end. There are some charts on there. And there's actually a really nice chart that shows just, just what Jamal was saying, which was, there was a time when we were losing about $280,000 worth of revenue to other towns choosing out and we were only gaining about $100,000. We have reversed that. And in fact, the first budget that I proposed was called the Challenge of Choice, to reverse that. And now we're actually gaining more revenue from choice and, and not sending out as many students who are choosing out. And so it's, you'll see it in a chart, in a document on the website. And if you don't, email me or come by because I know, you know, I'd be happy to share it with you. Because it's something that we're very proud of. When I was hired six years ago, there was a concern about perceptions. And like I said, actually, Maynard's an amazing town with amazing schools and a lot of good things going on. But we have to serve all students.
The amount of money for last fiscal year 17 for choice in was $293,060. So that was money we got in from kids coming here.
That was going to be my question. I know I've seen the number, but now that's, that sparked my curiosity.
Last year was $58,172.
So it's about a six-to-one ratio for the choice in versus the choosing out.
And just to sort of quantify how many years ago, it was fiscal year 12 that they were about even with about $190,000 of choice in and $198,000 of choice out. So just, just a few years ago in fiscal year 12, we were about even in terms of that piece. We've done an incredible job. No, that's a separate category.
And this isn't special education either.
We pay out for the, all of, each of those students, yes. That is just school choice. So students choosing to come in here versus our students choosing to go to an area district like a-
like a Hudson, I don't actually know what districts are. Another option. We have those numbers, Colleen, where did we say they were? We have them available, we can bring them forward.
Jennifer, we looked at those numbers right around the audit in October, and if you, you've been coming to meetings for a long time, and you, you might remember.
In the past.
In the past, yeah. But, for those of you in the rooms, our former chairperson, Bill Coleman, tracked these numbers incessantly, and we, at any time, he had about twenty work, twenty years' worth of the census data at his fingertips, and every year, we looked at students in versus students out. So, speaking generally, we are gaining more students at this point than we are losing. But yes, for the purposes of this conversation, school choice is considered very differently than the students that choose to go to Assabette or to AMSA, for example, because they're different revenue streams, so as far as the budgeting process, we look at those numbers just in different categories.
I just want...
Yes. Absolutely.
So, can I add, though? The School Committee, that, as Justin said, they do, they get that census data, it's the October first census, but when Colleen gets it verified by the Department of Ed, usually in November, they review it. Some of the curricular changes that we made were, in fact, because of charter school competition, because we did see charter school competition had been small for a long time and it exploded. And so, what we did was, we looked at what they were offering, and two of the major things that they were offering were Latin and computer science at the, at the middle school level. And so, those are two curricular upgrades we made in the last two or three years to offset those concerns as well. And we're always in tune to, what are the other schools? You know, some things, like a vocational school, the cost of a vocational school, because it's, it's technology-heavy, is very expensive, and it's not something we can duplicate. So, there are programs that we have to accept, the right program for the child should be Aspen Valley. You know, if, you know, there's just no way we're going to duplicate a milling machine program when a milling machine costs a million dollars, just the machine itself. And it's the right thing for kids. But there are some things, like the charter schools, where we can learn from them, and we have tried, to your point.
Yeah, Justin.
Well, so what I would say, though, is that we have an amazing engineering program that does incorporate some computer programming into it, but it's not enough. What you're saying is, some of those things, when we were talking about, the School Improvement Council saying how they need more, and we have a list of about a million dollars of requests, those are the type of things that need to be on those lists, because we, as you said, you pointed it out, as an astute observer, we need to continue some of these amazing programs that we've started, but we can't do that if we don't have a growth budget. But we will continue to advocate for it, and you're right on the spot with, computer programming is one of the most viable industries for us to be preparing kids for, and every kid should have some kind of, should have more opportunities towards it. So, thank you for pointing that out.
And we are working on that for next year. For two years, I believe we have two years until our students who've gone through our computer science year at Fowler School, will get to the high school, will get to the freshman year, and so, Principal Kero Janus and I are talking about, you know, we don't just look sort of one year ahead, we're looking two and three years ahead about what our programming needs are, and we are looking at, how do we appropriately provide that as an option for our students, at a minimum for those who have a passion in it and want to do it, if not beginning, as Dr. Girardi said, to expand it as an overall comprehensive program.
Thanks, Jennifer.
One hundred percent.
Couldn't agree with you more.
Fair, fair.
Every year that I've been on the School Committee, we've had a wish list, that's always been one of those items. And Dr. Girardi did speak, misspeak ever so slightly when he said, those are some of the things that should be on, and I just wanted to clarify that that's one of the things that is on it. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead. Hi.
Right. Yes. And unfortunately, it's on the cut list, but what you're saying is, if it isn't on the cut list, it helps to, you know, what we're trying to do, which is keep kids in Maynard, provide them what they need in Maynard. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, the way choice works is, you have to see, if, if you, you have to see where you have open seats, and in the past, we had a lot of small classes, so we had lots of opportunity to bring school choice in. And by the way, once they come in, like, if they come in, if they choice into Maynard's public schools and kindergarten, they stay in all the way until they graduate, they never leave, they're allowed to stay, because they've made a choice to commit to us. And so, what that has done is, our class sizes in the past, when I first got here, sometimes we'd have a class size of 119, sometimes we'd have a class size of 89. And so, those class sizes of 89, we wanted to fill them up to reasonable amounts. And what's happened now is, between that challenge of choice, where now, people are staying in Maynard for the most part, many people are, some are still choosing out, the class sizes have gotten bigger, the average class sizes have gotten bigger in the classrooms, the class size, you know, when I got here, our graduating class was 58 students. So, the School Committee reviews all of the class sizes, and that's where we came up with, this year, all of our classes are, and they asked the principals, how many students are in every class? And we give the School Committee data, it's part of that book that I talked about, it shows you how many students are in every class, how many sections of classes there are, because at the elementary school, it's directly related to the number of sections we have. And so, that's why this number that we talked about in school choice, we're, we're at the point now where all of our classes are over 100, and there, there's very few classes where we have room to add more choice students in. The choice students that are here will stay here until they graduate, but we've gotten to the point where, if we were to add more choice, it wouldn't offset the need for more staffing, which would then be more expensive, and that's, I think, the root of the question is, you know, if it were just pure revenue, yeah, we'd...
And, and to extend that idea a little bit further, we could roll the dice and gamble with that, and open, and see if we could use some of that revenue to hire additional FTEs, but then what do you do for the students one year if you have a bubble group that all decide to go to AMSA together? And we lose a lot of that revenue, you're putting yourself in a position where you're essentially creating your own structural deficit by gambling like that. So, we're systematically looking at that census that's conducted every October first every year, and identifying where we can very thoughtfully insert students without blowing class sizes out of proportion, as a way of trying to bring additional revenue in, but also being very mindful that the more students we add and the more we skew the class sizes, the more we're indirectly affecting the education of the students that are in those classes. So, it's a delicate balance every year, and it's actually, we keep saying it's a good problem to have, but it is, because we have students that are still desiring to come here, and we're thoughtfully finding them holes when they, when they present themselves, but we're keeping our eye on the larger picture and not creating more problems for ourselves in the long run.
The Challenge of Choice. So, that revenue source, because it's not dependable, because, you know, like you said, at some point, that leaves, right? We use that to offset one-time costs as opposed to offset the operating budget. So, every year, you can count on a boiler going down, you can count, you can count on an extra cold winter and more heating costs, that, that money is used to supplement a lot of the maintenance, quite frankly, on the buildings at one-time cost as opposed to the operating budget, so we don't get ourselves into that bind. And as, as Justin mentioned, we, we actually have Nesdeck do a student enrollment projection so that we think about, all the way out to like 2025, what will the student population be even with potential projects in town, development projects, like housing starts? So, we look at that kind of data, and we actually had a School Committee member who would actually critique Nesdeck's data, enrollment projections, because he was such a mathematician, and he still does it for us. He's a great member of the community, so that we can kind of figure out where those class sizes are going to be all the way out till 2025. So, we do look at that data, and we do plan for the very long term in regards to student enrollments. It's a concern.
It's something that we've had, so, I want to keep parroting about the Finance Committee forum, but it's something that's in our document, that we post those projections, which are actually, even in our current year, are below our actual number of students that we have in districts, so the projection, because they started the projection in, I think, 2012, that we have currently, and it's below where we are now, so we are growing, and it's a good problem to have in some aspects. But that is one of the points that we make, is if, if, if we continue to grow in the way that we are, we are going to necessarily have more costs, and is it, you know, a one-to-one ratio of one student moves in, so that means it's an extra $14,000, which is the average per pupil cost? No, it's not quite that simple. However, over time, and very quickly, it becomes a problem, and so, one of the points that we make is, is if those projections go up and our ability to generate revenue sources goes down, then that's going to be a problem. There's an additional revenue stream that we aren't talking about, which is the international students who come into the high school for a semester or for, for a year. Those are based on available seats as well. If, if our high school is full or overcrowded, that revenue goes away, which, again, we're using it for one-time funds and trying to be mindful and planful of that, so we don't create ourselves a structural deficit, like we heard discussed on, on Tuesday. But, those are things that we're very much aware of and, and don't have an answer for, but certainly are pointing out, hopefully, to, to the residents and to the community and to the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator as well.
So, we agree with you. It's a concern, we're keeping our eye on it, we do try to be thoughtful, which is why the school choice is so limited this year and was so limited last year. In the past years, it was much more open, but we're at the point where we can't, we can't have it that open. So... So, those revenue streams are very small compared to the total budget. The majority of our funding comes from local funding, state funding, and federal grant funding, and I'll let Michelle speak to that a little bit more, our Finance Director, or Jennifer.
I think, I think what you're asking is, what other revenue streams outside of...
WAVM.
The, there, there, well, we don't get a revenue stream from WAVM.
Chapter seventy.
Yeah, the chapter seventy, right.
We're hoping.
We're trying to move forward with a chapter seventy-four program, it's something that's a, you know, a couple of years' progression, but at some point, that will allow us, if it were to be approved, to get some additional grant funds to help supplement the budget. But, the, I think what you're asking is, outside of foreign exchange or school choice, is there any other little revenue? The only other one that generates any sort of revenue, and, and another reason why our custodians are so...
Busy.
Busy and needed, is we do a facility rentals, and that's really, and in previous years, we probably haven't generated as much, but we, we do have a lot more people coming in and renting the facility, and, I mean, you can ask Kyle, he's been out straight, because our high school is so new and a flagship and beautiful, people are interested in renting our auditorium there, and the stage, we have people who rent our fields, those kind of things. Those funds, again, are not used to balance our budget, because they're variable, but what we do use those on is for, you know, maintenance, like, if something breaks on our stage, we, you know, we use that to repair it, you know, line our fields, seed our fields, and, and really maintain our facilities so that people would want to pay, continue to pay, and rent here. So, those are really our only other, you know, revenue streams. You know, some of the other things that come into play, they're not revenue streams, but they're, they're fees that we take in are like, you know, the fees that we take in for bus...
Transportation.
Transportation and the...
Activity fees.
Athletic activity fees. But those fees, again, are not used to balance our budget, but what they do is, they allow us to not put such a strain on the general fund budget for things like our athletics program and those kind of things. But other than that, that's really all we have.
You had asked a question about what are the creative out-of-the-box thinking, and that's something that we're continuously trying to do, so Dr. Girardi has identified two or three creative revenue streams to try, since his time here, started here, coming in, we've mentioned a couple of them. One of the other things that we're attempting to do, we formed a partnership with LaSalle College, where we are creating a dual enrollment program with, with a hybrid model, so most of it's online, which means we can sell seats pretty effectively to area districts, and so we're working to do that, we have to build the program up to make that happen, and, and we're doing that in a, in a way that we can then provide an opportunity for our students to get some really high-level programming that we wouldn't be able to provide otherwise in some of those low-incidence areas. So, if we had one or two students who wanted to take a particular course, this might be a way for us to be able to afford to do that. You know, so I think in terms of creative thinking and creative revenue generating, we're doing sort of the best we can, Justin mentioned the WAVM program, we are, we are attempting to apply for a chapter seventy-four approval for that, and, and we've hit a couple bumps in the road, but we're continuing to work with the state on that. That wouldn't be revenue generating in the sense of bringing in sort of dollars for students, choicing kids in, but it would be revenue generating in a significant way in regards to grant funding that we could use for a variety of things. So, I think on the School Department side, there's a lot of different ways in which we are attempting to provide, offset, you know, some of these components of what we're, of what we're trying to do and trying, trying to get that revenue in. We keep hearing revenue is an issue and we need more revenue. I think, you know, this administration and this School Committee is, is trying to do the best they can, and that's our capacity, so...
I just wanted to point out one other thing, which I, I don't know if I mentioned or not, but a, a lot of the laws behind these revolving counts kind of set what we can spend the funds on, so that's another thing to keep in mind, like, when we collect transportation fees, they have to go to transportation. When we do facility rental fees, it's not like we can use those funds to fund a teacher or anything like that, we have to use those on what we collected the funds for, so it's for facility maintenance and those kind of things. So, it's just, I wanted to make sure that I put that out there, that, you know, we may be able to generate this revenue, and in a way, it can help us by not having to strain our general fund so much for these other things that have, I mean, we've had boilers go down, we had a heating thing go down this year, those kind of things, but that we are very restricted on what we can spend those funds on. very restricted on what we can spend those funds on.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and we had a whole lot of discussion, some of it quite fringy as far as its tangential nature, but at this point, I'm going to call for a vote, all in favor of the school choice motion? Motion passes 3-0, thank you. Okay, members' comments or questions?
Fiscal year 18 budget.
Oh, fiscal year 18 budget, sorry.
More conversation.
Yeah, so at this point in time, we're reopening the conversation on the fiscal year 18 budget.
We all talked out?
It's okay, I'm using my teaching strategies, it's wait time.
Is it on your town, can you...
So, great civics question. I didn't plan on, you know, doing a civics lesson tonight, but here's the little bit that I know, and I hope that it's enough to get you pointed in the right direction so that you can find the people who actually understand this a little bit better.
I might be able to.
Yes, Jennifer, having a lot of experience on the town side, might help as well. So, at this point, the warrant articles are drafted, and the warrants are printed. However, nothing is binding until the motion passes on the floor at town meeting. Under the terms of our charter and the terms of open meeting law, anyone who is a citizen of the town of Maynard can step to the microphone at town meeting and make a motion to amend the current, or the current warrant on the floor. That could be the overall town budget, that could be the school budget only. There are very specific processes and a very specific way that such an amendment has to be written and presented at town meeting. At that point in time, there are additional structures that kick into play, the percentage of vote needed to move such a motion changes, I think it goes from a simple majority to a two-thirds vote. So, there are many things, it is not a done deal yet. The other part of this conversation you heard us talk extensively about on Tuesday night, when we were in our joint meeting with the BOS, we still do not know what the final number is that's coming from the federal government, we still don't know what the final number that's coming from the state government is. So, that number is always kind of in flux, but it's important to remember that any changes in that funding structure go to the town side first, where they are then released to come to the school side. Just because something is earmarked as Chapter 70 educational funding doesn't mean that it has to come to us. And I see you roll your eyes, and I hope everybody is feeling that exact same emotion right now, because we need people to continue doing what you're doing tonight, what you did on Tuesday night, what you did two weeks ago on April 13th when we discussed the budget publicly. Continue to advocate for our schools, please. You hear the depths of the impacts of the cuts that we've been forced to make, those are not just a one-time thing, those are on top of the cuts from fiscal year 17, and fiscal year 16, and fiscal year 15. So, I opened with a statement saying, we need to have a long and very deep and very thoughtful conversation about how we as a town prioritize our spending. There is only so much money to go around, but that money can be shifted. So, getting people out, going to BOS meetings, going to FinCom meetings, going to planning committee meetings. We have Parker Street that we knocked the buildings down on five years ago. Do you realize, if we had just left those buildings standing, we would be receiving so much more tax revenue from that parcel? Right now, we're getting about $80,000 a year. I don't know what the number would be if those buildings were still physically standing, but I've been told that it's several times larger than the number that we're currently getting right now. So, what sense does that make to have an empty parcel? Town voted overwhelmingly at town meeting many years ago to vote down the initial Parker Street project. We tried it again. So, this is a process, like we need to have a serious conversation about how we fund our town. As a homeowner, I understand, we pay really high per cap real estate taxes, our private, our small business owners pay really high small business taxes in this town. So, the only option that I really see as being feasible is getting more in. But again, we can't keep just building real estate, because that eventually has an impact on the conversations that we're having here as a committee. So, when it boils down to it, we need commercial and sales tax revenues, and we need to maybe have a conversation about an overrun. Prop 2 and 1/2.
Can you talk about the additional funding that's been asked, you guys?
Kevin Sweet.
The Town Administrator would recommend to the Board of Selectmen, so, I talked about, and they ultimately make decisions, they make the final decisions on the budget, so it's their budget to make. And to be fair, I talked about the chart that showed that until 2013, Maynard always funded the schools more than the state average, per pupil average, now it's less than. Even with that, there are a lot of impoverished communities that only fund to the foundation budget, which is much lower than that state average, and there's a foundation budget that state says, if your town is funding over the foundation budget, which they still are, even though they're below the per pupil average, then they don't have to give us any of those extra funds. So, that's why it goes to them, they get to decide how to parse that out.
It becomes discretionary.
And it becomes discretionary on their part. And so, you know, to be fair and honest, they do, they have funded us well for years, but now, when you look at the per pupil average, it's gone down, so...
What's that?
The town has funded schools very well, and there's been a strong appreciation for education, that's one of the reasons that drew me to Maynard, was you had great schools, you had great people, and you have a great town. The problem is that choices have been made in the last three or four years, and the choices have resulted in your per pupil expenditure being less than the state average. It's not that it's bad, because I, you know, I've worked in some communities where they're at the foundation budget, they're very low, and they have their own set of challenges. But, you know, I do want to be fair to them, they do fund us above the foundation, which is why they have that choice. Does anybody else want to speak?
Did you, oh, sorry, I thought, did you guys...
Yeah, I thought you had comments.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion about how we hold, is there any, is there a cover, that that's, is there any...
Yeah, I think that was special town.
But that money, when there's a one-time expense, we can't use that for operating budget because it's not stable, we don't know when we're going to have it and when we're not going to have it.
And if I remember correctly, I think that was a free cash article.
No, it was capital stabilization.
It was capital stabilization.
Yeah, the Board of Selectmen, with that particular article, the school committee went to the board and sort of asked if we were to put this forward, what funding source would you recommend, free cash or capital stabilization? And they recommended the capital stabilization transfer. So, if we were to not do that, and there has been a lot of, I won't say conversation about not going forward, but a lot of consternation about why are you doing this when all of these other things are happening? And I know people rolled their eyes when we talk about different pots of money, but as Michelle pointed out, there are very, there are rules around sort of how we can spend money and what we can do with it. If we weren't to do that, that would go back, that money would go back into the capital stabilization account. So, it's not something that would come to the schools that we would then be able to use for any of those pieces.
Then, if I do, I would see expenditures that...
What would have to happen is that we would need a vote at, if, I believe, if I'm correct, and I might need some help on this, what would have to happen, is that that, I'm not even sure how you would do that, but if we were to say we weren't doing that, that money would go back into, if it's that simple, go back into the capital stabilization account. There would then need to be, either through amendment or through a warrant article, a motion on town meeting floor to spend capital stabilization money for some sort of project. Could we say we're going to spend the 245 on the 275 of special ed out of district costs? Michelle's saying no.
If it's part of, if the funds were already set aside for capitalization...
She's asking if we could move it back, could we then go and ask for those funds for the...
I suppose we could if the town of...
Well, they would have to be a vote from the town to move it from the stabilization and to...
It would probably have to go into the general fund.
General fund or free cash somehow, yeah. Because it's, again, with those revolving, it happens on the town side, too, we're not the only ones bound by what we can spend certain monies on, but it happens for them also. So, if they have something that's set aside in a stabilization fund, usually those are specific, they're called stabilization funds for expenses, and they're usually really spelled out on what we were setting that, what we reserved that fund balance for and what we were putting it towards. So, I mean, I think that's maybe a town question, because I'm only really familiar with the schools.
I'm going to take a stab at it, because, and I will profess that I don't know municipal finance.
Yeah.
But I think that a stable capitalization fund is kind of like a savings account towards all capital improvements. And so, what I've been told is, if you have a healthy stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, then if you want to borrow money for a big project, like building a high school or building a new fire station, the loan, you get a better deal on your loan because you've saved a lot of money yourself. I think the reason why the Board of Selectmen suggested that if we're going to do a playground project, that we take the money out of the capital stabilization fund is because it's related to capital. A playground project is a capital project. And so, that's where the connection is as to why they use that money, but if it were to go back into the capital stabilization fund, it would have to be used on some other capital project, like a fire station, or, you know, we talked about renovations to the Crow Park, Crow Park parking lot, that was one place, you know, that was a capital project that never got, you know, went all the way through, but it was considered at the same time as the playground. They may have taken that same money and used it for that. But it's more, because it's the capital stabilization fund, it's for capital projects, which is really relevant to the playground, but the town had to make a choice, playground, parking lot, they made a choice.
And to the bigger picture, that this would, that would, I like how you're thinking outside the box, trying to come up with solutions, but this will be a very short term, it's not something that would be, the overarching problem is that we're not getting level funding, and all level funding is that, so...
I would encourage you to at least have a conversation with the town, and I know it would be an easy move, and I'm not saying that I don't support the bring-out project, but, you know, we're in a real tough situation, and I think having a conversation exploring any take on what it was going to be, and even with that, we might not want to move that direction, but I think it would be worth asking a question.
So, just on your point, I'm jotting myself a note, I'll ask a few people that clearly know a lot more than we do about what that process might look like, or if it's even feasible, and we'll see where it goes.
Because I know we also want to learn, we have, you know, we're probably going to be moving additional money for that same project, which I believe we were told would not be asked for, so, you know, putting that aside, we're now being asked to go out of our money for the same project, and I think, I think, you know, we all need to really figure out where our...
Agreed, agreed, thank you for that. Other questions about the budget process, priorities? Okay, then at this point, I'm going to move on and move to the item that I tried a few minutes ago, which is members' comments and questions. Anything from the board here?
No, I'd just like to say that, just to echo what's been said repeatedly over and over again, we have had some luck in the past few years where, between this time of year and town meeting, which is only a couple weeks away, the Board of Selectmen have been generous and have found some other ways to send some more money to us to help decrease our deficit, but it's because of our constituents, you people, getting out there and letting them know that if they get some of that Chapter 70 funding back to us, that, again, they're not contractually obligated to give to us, they hear from enough people saying, hey, you should funnel that back to the schools, that's what we need. So, I just, I implore you and everybody you know, I mean, the loudest voice is the one that's going to be heard, so if the town, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, if they keep hearing this collective voice that says, we emphasize the importance of schools and value that as a town, that's where we have to, we have to keep going with that unified voice, so that way, we can do whatever we can, because we're, I mean, we're running out of time at this point.
And town meeting's on the 15th, I know it's on a weeknight, I know that for those of us with families, it's a significant concern trying to arrange childcare. Again, I implore anyone who's a voter to please come out and make your voice heard. Those of us who are required to attend town meeting have often sat in rooms where we've had questions if we were going to get a quorum. So, in a town of approximately 10,000 people, having a hard time getting 125 to 150 people in a room is a little bit surprising. Is 75 the quorum?
Yeah, we reduced it a few years ago.
Well, then, that tells you everything you need to know. And that 175 people that are needed for the quorum are often the same people. So, if you want to have a voice in your town and you want to start seeing some positive change and starting to use your influence, please encourage people to come out. I know that at previous meetings, we've had members of the National Honor Society that have done childcare.
We do, we have that established, folks will be here for around 6:30, so there is childcare from our high school students, providing that support with some games and things like that, so, that is available for people as well.
Very good.
Is that making it in here or is it at the hall?
It's here.
No, I'll be here.
In this room.
This room.
They'll be sitting up there.
I usually sit right over there. Any other members' comments or questions? Okay, so moving on, Agenda Item Number 9 is an executive session in regards to union conversations and collective bargaining. We don't have the documentation that we were expecting to have ready for tonight, so I'm going to table this and move it to our main meeting. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone, for coming out, really appreciate it.